Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSCV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. Before I move on to roll call, I'd like to remind you all that are standing up, there is an overflow room at the Pasco Police Department's community room if you'd like to make your way down that way. Thanks again. Roll call, please. Council members, Brown?
Present.
Campos?
Present.
Mel?
Present.
Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas? Present. And with that, would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the order listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired, the council members or the public... If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A: Approval of Meeting Minutes for February 21st and 27th. Item B: Bills and Communications to Approve Claims in the Total Amount of $3,834,226.76. Item C: Ordinance Number 4643 Amending Pasco Municipal Code Chapter 2.05 City Council Related to Open Public Meetings Act Updates. Item D: Ordinance Number 4634A Correcting Scrivener's Errors in the Legal Description. Item E: Resolution Number 4314 Rescinding an Emergency Proclamation. Item F: Resolution Number 4315 Bid Award Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvement Phase And to approve resolution... Sorry. Item G: Resolution Number 4316 Washington State Department of Ecology Agreement for the Pasco Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project Phase 2. Item H: Approve the First Amendment to Interim City Manager's Contract. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. And can I get a roll call vote, please? Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Campos?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Mel?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. With that, we go on to item number five on the agenda, Proclamations and Acknowledgements None Listened. Skipping over to item number six, Public Comment. Public may ask... Address Council on Any Items Unless It Is Related to Scheduled Public Hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is to provide... Is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to a certain amount of time, and due to the size of this room, it will be limited to two minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. With that, I would like to invite anyone in the council chambers to step forward, make a statement, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name's Charles Grimm, resident of Pasco. Super proud, that's how I felt after the January 17th meeting when the council was able to come to a compromise regarding the sale of cannabis. The progressive council members came poised that night to lift the moratorium, but rather than allowing marijuana sales all over the city, you came to a compromise with the conservatives. Both sides made concessions and neither side got exactly what they wanted, but all seven of you compromised on a very controversial topic. Then, just a few weeks later, in the public comment section of the meeting, a gentleman mounted this podium and was thanking you for revisiting the minutes. I had no idea what he was talking about until the very end of that meeting when most of the public had left in the largely empty council chambers. Mayor Barajas, you attempted to upend the earlier vote for procedural reasons. This very topic that was studied, discussed, evaluated, and had public testimony for months out in the open was suddenly being overturned in a nearly empty council chamber at the end of a meeting without any notice to the public. So when the procedural attempt proved meritless, Madam Mayor, that's when you asked staff how to rescind your vote. Even more shocking, you and Councilmember Brown blamed your staff. I had the agenda in my lap for 10 minutes. There was two options, a conditional use permit or a license, and then where it was gonna go. Even Councilmember Campos said each council member's job is to be prepared. When citizens decry a lack of transparency in their government, it's instances like this that give a lot of credence to their frustrations. In fact, Councilmember Campos called it kind of underhanded and kind of shifty the way we're going about it, and then just minutes later, he voted for the very thing, just moments before. He called it underhanded and shifty. Mayor Protem Maloney, you read part of Dallas Barnes' letter regarding a history of segregation and discrimination in East Pasco. It's probably the... Oh, is that 15 seconds? So we're doing two minutes tonight? Perfect, okay. Super disappointed, that's how I feel right now. I don't know what conversations transpired between the votes or what kind of pressure was put on you, Madam Mayor, but as Councilmember Campos said, the waters have been muddied, but it's not too late. Side with your police, your sheriff, your downtown businesses, and keep the sale of cannabis in your industrial races on the trial. Come together and do the right thing.
If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Mary Peretta.
If you can turn on...
I'm Mary Peretta. I live at 1213 Road 56, corner 56 in Maria. Been a Pasco resident for the last 15 years with my children, my animals, and my horses. Over the past two years, I and my neighbors have made multiple complaints to animal control...
If you can give me just a second?
Those are pictures.
If you can hand them over to the clerk, please?
Thank you. And to the Pasco Police Department. Pasco Police have at least responded to now two calls at my home about three aggressive pit bulls in my neighbor's yard. On Saturday, the 25th of February, those three dogs came through our pasture fence. They attacked my two eight-month-old foals. Both have been seriously injured and bitten. I will have extensive vet bills, months of healing. Animal Control came despite the numerous complaints that have been called... And I have a witness statement from my neighbor. I know he's called in. I know other neighbors have called. Animal Control and the Pasco PD, when the animal control officers came, I've been told they only saw one complaint on record. Those dogs were left, they were not impounded. My roommate, who was in the pasture trying to save my horses, was treeed on a six-foot steel panel on the top, two rungs, is still having nightmares and crying bouts. I still have no confirmation from Animal Control that those dogs have been impounded or destroyed. They absolutely fit the city ordinance definition of potentially dangerous and dangerous dogs. Now that the city is managing animal control, I ask you, would you feel comfortable with those dogs still in that house with your children or your grandchildren playing in your backyard next to them? How would we feel if those animals were not impounded and those dogs weren't contained and they got out?
You have 15 seconds left.
And they attacked a child? Do we want that kind of lawsuit? When the parents find out that there had been multiple, multiple complaints and police reports filed on those dogs? I'm asking that Animal Control do their job, that we take more seriously complaints of dangerous animals. I love dogs, I have dogs myself, I've had pit bulls my life, I'm not against pit bulls, I'm against people who don't take care of their animals and allow them to become a dangerous threat to the neighborhood. And the pictures that I provided to the city clerk are the injuries to my two baby horses who are eight months old, are both extremely well-bred horse show prospects who now have those horse show prospects limited. $10,000 horses. Thank you.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Josh Fay. I'm born and raised here in Pasco. I live on Irving Street here in Pasco. I'm also representative for the Carpenters Union here out of Kennewick, so I'm here to speak regarding Dairy Gold. This project is utilizing over $3 million in taxpayer dollars to extend the BNSF railroad for their benefit, as well as taking advantage of the new addition to the BWRF, the Process Water Use Facility, that is also using taxpayer dollars. This project has a set budget of over $600 million, and there are carpenters on site working for Rashi that are not being paid the area's standard wages for carpenters. They are making on average approximately $30 on the check, and they pay for their own insurance, which lowers their take-home pay even more. Where is the fairness in this situation? How does the community benefit from this? Where are the apprentices on site learning and paving the way for the future of the construction industry in the tri-cities? We have a corporation building the largest dairy processing facility in the nation that will continue to create wealth for the company for generations to come. These carpenters deserve a livable wage. Corporations that come into our area need to be utilizing local contractors with state-registered apprentices. We have a whole generation of construction workers getting ready to retire. This current culture is setting our construction industry back here in Pasco. Dairy Gold will be the cornerstone for a whole new development area named the Ryman Industrial Center that will replicate the existing Pasco Processing Center and bring many more companies interested in the future. Fixing these issues is what will bring community wealth to Pasco and the rest of the tri-cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from Chambers?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to speak.
If you can state your name and address for the record.
Of course. David Morgan, 1827 West Octave.
Shaila Morgan, 1827 West Octave.
So, we're just here tonight to ask that the council proceeds to consider passing a motion, followed by an ordinance to allow cannabis in retail. We did bring some supporters out to help you guys make your decision, reassure you that that's what the public is wanting. This tax revenue is getting pushed across the river, and it's unfair to Pasco residents. It could be redistributed to this education system or whatever you guys feel fit, so hopefully we can continue moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Larson. I am at 1714 Reservoir Loop Road in Gleed. I am a future hopeful business owner here, but I'd like to read into the record a letter from Holly Cousins, who is a Yakima City Council member. My name is Holly Cousins, and I have been a Yakima City Council member since 2016. During my first run in 2015, I ran on a platform of economic development, public safety, and fiscal responsibility. Part of my public safety platform was to overturn Yakima's moratorium on cannabis. I know that your city council has been studying this issue for some time. I wanted to reach out to you personally in hopes to ease some of the fears and/or concerns that come with making this decision. In 2016, I brought this to our city council, sure there were concerns. Many people on both sides of the issue reached out and came to the council to speak. Like your council, our council studied the issue. We even sent it to our planning commission to discuss zoning, ensuring we make the right decision. Since the market is regulated on how many licenses can be allocated in each city, we knew we would not have stores popping up on every corner. We also know that by lifting the moratorium, we were saying that we are in favor of free enterprise. I want to talk public safety for a minute. For me, public safety does not just mean more policing. Public safety means recognizing our deeper problems and finding ways to address them. It is the understanding that replacing black markets with legal ones takes money away from criminals and gives it to law-abiding citizens. Money that once was funding gangs now generates tax revenue and helps criminals, takes criminals off the streets. On the state side of things, I would encourage you to look at the McCleary deal as it was funded through profits generated from cannabis. By lifting the moratorium on cannabis, you are welcoming new business, creating jobs, generating revenue for your city, and taking a stand on public safety. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to share this important issue with you and encourage you to reach out to me should you have any questions. Sincerely, Holly Cousins. I'd also like to add that Yakima County, or the city of Yakima, when they legalized and let go of their moratorium, they legalized in retail and industrial areas. They did not have a conditional use permit, and they have had zero issues as a result of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, this gentleman hit it on the nose. It's about money. Okay?
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm Jim Raymond, I'm sorry. 2525 Road 44 in Pasco. Been a resident for nearly 45 years now. This is about money. Your community members came in front of you not so long ago, and as Mr. Grimm, there was a middle road that was met. If you look, and if you had eight stores, you would generate about $400,000 a year. Your budget is over $350 million a year right now, so you tell me where this is going to help the city of Pasco in any way. No one's against people having businesses. What we negotiated with our council members to put the stores in industrial areas, and some people didn't like that. It's entertaining and a little confusing that at the last minute, at o dark 30 at night, Madam Mayor, you all of a sudden were confused and wanted to withdraw your vote, even though your community member asked you and agreed with you with the decision that was made. I would suggest that you consider what you've done and how you're representing your community by withdrawing your vote and acting confused, because there is nothing confusing about it.
Michelle Andrews, 1421 North Road 77, Pasco, Washington. That was the sheriff. Nobody knows better than the sheriff what this kind of... What this kind of business does to the community at night when you're all sleeping. I'm a civil service commissioner for Franklin County, and I rode along with the county sheriff to get an understanding. The day that we rode, a grandfather and his son were popping wheelies at 70 miles an hour down court. The kid was 17. So when they shook him down, they found pot, and that young man went to jail that day. His life was permanently changed. I wish you could have been in the By County meeting where the heart of this community is crying out to fix mental health. It is a bona fide fact in a very wide documented article that was published by Hillsdale by a libertarian that's neither "you do you and I do me" kind of guy, found that this leads to violent schizophrenia. It's reports from all over the world. Okay? That... Shh! You can have your turn at the mic when you get it. But this does not have the payoff that you hope. The man that organized this is the same guy that bought the Wilson House. How's it gonna help those women? We bring in the House of Charities, the Catholic House of Charities, how is pot gonna help them? It's not. It's gonna prey on them. It's gonna hold them back. And the man that just spoke to you from the Dairy Gold and the Carpenters Union, when people try to raise themselves up with certification, education, or going to do a trades, they have to pass a P test. You can't work on my car and change my brakes if you can't pass the P test. And you can't work and build something in Hanford. They can't raise themselves up. It spites our face. Thank you. Just a second, ma'am, before you start. I'd like to call order, please. If you can reserve your comments, allow the person at the mic to make their full statement. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Donnie Pitzer. I'm at 2710 Inglewood Avenue, Yakima. Let's see, I've been a medical marijuana patient since 2008 after I was hit in a head-on collision by a drunk driver. I grew up in a family with alcoholics, and when my family was drinking, there was a lot of violence in the home. When my family was not drinking and they were smoking pot because they had to have their vice, they were addicts, okay? It was not violent. It was a lot nicer, it was a lot smoother and a lot calmer. That's what we're looking at for your constituents, that's what we're looking at for these people. If all they have is alcohol, that's all they're gonna use, that's all they're gonna go to. And an alcoholic is way more violent than someone who's been sitting around smoking marijuana, despite what was just said. Okay? The other thing is that as a medical marijuana consultant from the state of Washington, not just a patient, I have seen many, many of y'all's constituents drive all the way to Yakima just to get an affordable medical card because there is no competition here in town. They have to pay what they have to pay. They have no other choice. If you provide that competition for them, the price of their medication will drop down. The price of their legally adding into the system will drop down. Okay, I hear a lot of talk about the taxes, and that's great, but it seems, looking around your city, that y'all are doing fine on your taxes. Your money income is doing fine. You don't need all of this income, but your constituents, your constituents could really use safe access locally to their medication. It will help. Thank you.
Wanda Hatch, 1530 Falls Road, Pasco. I have been a resident of Pasco since I was 14. My mother worked actually in the district office as the purchasing secretary and as well as the secretary at Stevens Middle School. It was junior high at that time. I first want to give a shout out to the downtown Pasco businesses. I have three daughters. I bought all, well, 90% of their formal dance dresses in downtown Pasco. The wonderful thing about the Pasco dress shops is they aren't all Canson Yatta dresses, first of all, but they all come with this extra shawl. And in our church, our daughters are encouraged to wear modest dresses, and so we were able to modestify their dresses, and it was just beautiful. I hope more people use those dress shops when they're looking for dresses for their daughters. Those tax dollars are important, too. I want to say that I respect those that need medical marijuana. I do believe it has medicinal purposes. There is no doubt about that. However, just as there are other medicines that are prescription-only, they're that way for a purpose. Prozac is very good for people that need it, but for those that don't, it's dangerous. And not everybody's brain chemistry is similar, so you do have people that have terrible reactions even to cannabis. I had a brother who smoked in the 70s when it was a much milder version, and he would become very irritable and actually abusive as he was coming off of it. So to say that it brings everyone down is not necessarily true.
You have 15 seconds?
Thank you. What I am really hoping is that you look at Yakima, because I will say the Yakima is probably more similar to Pasco demographically, and I know that the year that they passed it, I believe it was 2013, crime spiked tremendously. So I looked at that. If anybody wants to look, you can look at that. I did email every one of you quickly, and I put in their...
Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Levede. I live at 4513 West Henry in Pasco. I've lived in the tri-cities for 24 years, and my family has been here since the 40s. I have worked in the legal cannabis industry for the last two years in Washington, Oregon, and California, and also have an entire family that has been a part of that community before it became legal. I believe that this will help the city a lot with obviously tax revenue and bringing in money into the city and putting in money into areas that are kind of being abused right now in certain places. I know the lady before me just said she dress shopped in downtown Pasco, but for a lot of us that have lived in Pasco, we do other things. We go grocery shopping down there, we support all these other local businesses, so why can't we have something that's gonna continuously bring something into the community and not just into certain times of the year? I believe that cannabis does more than create an issue, I believe it solves an issue. Myself personally, at a very young age, I was diagnosed with ADD and was put on Ritalin, a prescription medicine, and had a feeling that I wasn't a child. When I got to a certain age, I found out that cannabis does for me what I... The prescription medicines that professionals were giving me should have made me feel and be able to function like a normal human. If people continuously read articles that had all this information, I think it would bring a lot more education to this community, too. I think that this is gonna bring more jobs as well. Like I said, I've worked in the industry for the last two years in three different sectors, and I think it can bring a lot more towards higher education. It's agriculture. That's what we do here in Pasco in the tri-cities. We have a bunch of agriculture, so why can't we show kids there's a new way in science to do things? Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Judy Gerhard. I live on 9005 Poole Street here in Pasco, and I oppose all cannabis shops here in Pasco. This is according to an article, Marijuana Mental Illness and Violence by Alex Berenson. And these are just some facts I'd like to share from the article. I did share, I gave a copy of the article to each one of you on the council. Today's marijuana is 20 to 25% THC opposed to 2% that it was in the 70s. Peer-reviewed research and top medical journals show that marijuana can cause or worsen severe mental illness, especially psychosis. Teens that may have that schizophrenia gene that smoke marijuana regularly are three times more likely to develop schizophrenia. Psychosis leads to violence. A Swiss study found that over three-year period, young men using cannabis had 50% chance of becoming violent. Colorado, Washington, Alaska, and Oregon had an increase of 37% for murders and 25% assaults since cannabis was legalized in these states than from before. We've had a crisis in our nation, in the state of Washington, Seattle, of homelessness, of crime, of mental illness. There's one other thing on my list, and I don't feel like we need this. This is coming closer to our homes, we're being affected by it, our children are being affected by it. We can do better.
You have 15 seconds left.
We'll support small businesses, but we don't need this. And we do want to hold you folks accountable. When election comes up, we will remember.
My name's Gabriel Ramirez, I live at 721 North 20th, Pasco. Like, I've been smoking weed since I was a little kid. I smoke weed for fun, I don't smoke it for like medically, you know, I smoke it for fun. As far as like people like smoking themselves out of their house on some weed, they're smoking way more than weed on the streets. If you're like, you know, getting crazy like that, the better the weed is, the more you're not doing something. So it's just common sense, you know? So it's just common sense, you know? Um, you guys are just passing up money, you know, that somebody's gonna give you. Just you guys ain't, you guys don't even put it in on it. You just guys are gonna get broke off. So yeah, I've never been in this position to pass money up. You guys must have it pretty nice, you know? So, just you know, think about it for real though, you know? It's not really crazy people out there smoking weed on the streets. If you walk around with a joint like I do, I've lived in, you know, 721 North 20th. I walk across the street, there's homeless people everywhere, none of them are hitting a joint or nothing. They're just smoking all kinds of other stuff that you guys look past and stuff. So don't blame that on the weed. If they might have some weed in his pocket, he was popping willys, you know? You guys get pulled over with groceries, have beer, you know, they don't talk about you guys like that. You know? Come on.
My name's Todd Lawson. I live at 515 Wright, Richland. I came here to support my union tonight. I didn't know the whole marijuana thing was going on. And I thought it'd be a good time to just uh, speak this. I'm not against the marijuana thing. I know we can get in Findlay, we can get in West Richland. But I think all of our city councils, all three cities, we should be talking more about the whole uh, zombie nation that's going around in our towns, the fentanyl, all that bad stuff. And I just wanted to throw that out there. That's all I have.
Anyone else wishing to address council during this time?
Mark Kraft, 4171 Alder, Pasco. Uh, I'm against it also. You know, I ride motorcycle. Dave, you ride. You know, I don't want somebody under the influence, like with the DWI numbers. I mean, they're up since we've legalized marijuana. I don't want somebody running up my ass when I'm on a stoplight or something, you know? It's, there's gotta be some way to control that. And this certainly doesn't, isn't gonna help the issue. You know, it's only seven, at least not anymore than seven miles across the river. If somebody wants it, I mean, we're not stopping them. Just go get it there. It's out of the way, out in the middle of nowhere. We don't need it in our industrial area even. We've got too many truckers that are gonna be smoking it, buying it there and smoking it. What, you know, it's, that's a ridiculous place for it too. So, you know, whether it be in town or out there, it's still a bad deal. So, and uh, like I say, I, I spoke before here and I, and I said, and Michelle mentioned the, the P test. You know, you guys hire city workers and, and police, you require a P test. You know, I think you should be able to, you should have to give that up if you're gonna allow it to sell it yourself. So, it's just all a bad deal, so. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Gentleman in the back?
Steve Wilson, Pasco. Um, hi, everybody. I've only recently, this past year, gotten involved with local politics. I feel it's how you can make the best impact, uh, when it comes to politics. Uh, last year, there was a lot, I came in about when there was a lot of discussion regarding uh, the cannabis issue. The decision was made. There was time given, there were people, the public was given an opportunity. Um, and it just seemed like, okay, well, Pasco City Council has their act together. Let me check out the history of Franklin County, Pasco. Come to find out, 2013, there was a big old, biggest embezzlement uh, case in the history of Washington of its kind came out of our county in 2013. And I thought, well, that's pretty bad, but maybe our city is doing a little bit better. Well, come to find out, the DPDA had some issues in 2016. Guess what? Embezzlement. Well, that's a little closer to home. Uh, maybe we're done with that. Until 2020, 21, when Neo's Nation Animal Foundation did some bad stuff. And now the city of Pasco is suing them. So, I had hoped for this group of people to make some smart choices. The leaders of Pasco and the leader of the leaders had finally decided to put the issue of cannabis to rest. They found three, when you overlay the uh, the forbidden zones of schools and parks and their thousand-foot buffer, there are three basic areas where you can even have retail cannabis. Out of that, there's what, five licenses even available? So we're talking about a very minor issue that's holding up the works when we have other issues that we need to be talking about. Some of them were brought up tonight. Um, let's, let's talk about humane society. We did good. Thank you.
Yep.
We went and scoped them out. What I'd like to see, let's table the issue or, or even um, what's the other option where you need two-thirds of the majority, you uh, indefinitely, whatever you guys do with it? Let's get it pa- let's get past it. That's all I'm saying. Let's get past it. I've been signing things since I'm 18. I don't get to rescind. I don't understand that and have lost faith and trust in the system and you people. That's where I'm at.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. One more comment?
Hi, I'm Terry Henricks. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, at 8401 Tucker Drive in Pasco. And I just have to say, this really irritates me because those are federally regulated businesses. Everybody talks about the, they're afraid their kids are gonna get hold of this or that or they're, they're gonna overdose their bees, see psychedelic and that sort of thing. Everything has to be labeled. They go in and check it. Everything has to be labeled. If you don't want to get really high, then you get the lower percentage. And those people are trained at the desk to tell people how much percentage is in it. It's very well labeled, even to keep it away from children. I would hate to think that my kid was going out and buying it on the black market with pesticides and everything else. That's what you have to worry about. Not something that's labeled. And those people come in, believe me, from the state and they check that store. And they make sure those labels are on. And they make sure the producers are on each one. They have numbers that people can go back on and check and make sure that this crop came from so-and-so and so-and-so. They're, they have it all done. Back in the seventies? Yeah, total pesticides. I don't know where she comes up with it being milder. Ha, I threw up on it. I smoked it, threw up on it, couldn't get across the bridge. Threw up, couldn't wait to get across the bridge because it made me sick. Do I smoke it now? Yes, sometimes I do. Do I get sick? No. Do I need it? Yes, because I am stressed to the max with this place. Not just you guys, I mean, just everything in general.
You have 15 seconds left.
Another thing is, my brother was in the, uh, he passed away. Is Mr. Raymond still here? Yeah. Okay, um, and he was in the USS Enterprise. Unfortunately, that ship blew up during the Vietnam War and he was on it. Um, he got PT-
Thank you, your time is up ma'am.
PTSD really bad. He could not rece-
Ma'am, sorry, your time's up.
He could not, just this real quick. He could not receive medical marijuana because the veterans' hospital would not let him receive it.
Thank you ma'am.
Because of the marijuana. So, he passed away.
Thank you ma'am.
From nerves and all that. So what I'm saying is, we need it for the veterans too.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
One last comment?
Good evening, Council. Thomas Granbois, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Uh, I want to start off by giving a big shout out to the Franklin County Republicans and the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. I never thought that they would be the ones to help push this forward to, to bring it at least in the I zones. But I want to bring it, circle back to where we started. We start, this discussion started off as a, as an economic driver for the downtown area. The fact of the matter is, is that we have a blight of empty buildings. And we don't have people clamoring to fill them right now. And we have a business owner who wants to come into the downtown and wants to become a partner and be involved in the downtown revitalization. Not only would they be a part of the revitalization, but also bringing in a huge amount of new traffic who normally wouldn't come downtown. We talked, we heard somebody talk about the Cason Yada stores. That's great, that's one customer base that comes downtown. But we need diversity to help lift the downtown. And diversity is what we, is what they will do. They will, you look at their, the cross-section of their customers. You look at uh, the other stores here in the area. And it's a, it's a broad swatch of the whole downtown or the whole, the whole area. It's not just one single group. So, I hope that you can consider opening up. Um, I think the Dallas Barnes comments in the, in the Herald that Councilmember Maloney cited were, were great comments about opening up in all the areas because it, it helps for equity in the area. And uh, and it will help lift up economic opportunity for businesses and hopefully fill up some of these uh, empty buildings that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, further comment? I'll move forward with our agenda. Um, item seven on the agenda, reports from committees and/or officers. Do any of our council members wish to share any events or meetings they've attended? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda yet again. Um, item- So we'll take a five-minute break to allow those individuals that wish to step out to allow them time. Great, thank you, everyone. We'll move forward with our agenda. Thank you, everyone. We'll move forward with our agenda. Moving on with uh, seven, eight, any verbal reports from council members? Seeing none, we'll move forward with uh, seven B, reports on pending legislation, Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think all of you had received a few correspondence from, from Dr. Finn about the Citizens Climate Lobby and some of the efforts that they've been making. Um, and, and I was requested by several to, to have him come up and do a brief presentation with you all. Uh, so Dr. Finn is with us tonight and he's got a brief presentation for you.
If you can turn on your microphone? Perfect, thank you.
Dennis Finn, 4803 Tamris Drive. Uh, I'd like to thank Mayor Barajas, the, the members of the council, and the city manager, Adam Lincoln, for providing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I come before you as a concerned citizen, retired NOAA atmospheric research scientist, and a grandparent concerned about the world we, we believe, we'll be leaving to coming generations. I represent the, I represent the Citizens Climate Lobby. And we're seeking a, an endorsement, the council's endorsement of their National Carbon Fee and Dividend Plan. This would impose no financial or logistical ob- obligations on the city. It would be a symbolic expression of political will and support. So why are we seeking this? Um, most of these things have received at least some degree of coverage in the media in recent years. There's the, this is probably the most. The increased frequency and severity of weather catastrophes related to global warming, the drought, flooding, hurricanes, wildfire, heat waves, sea level rise, ocean acidification, stress and damage to agriculture and ecosystem degradation, extinctions, health and air pollution impacts, and national security considerations. And this one includes things such as the economic disruptions from the actions of petro-state autocrats, think OPEC and Russia. And then the climate change contributions to the immigration crises, some of which have affected the US, such as Central America, but also like in the Middle East and Africa. And all these are very costly. And it's gonna get worse if we don't do something. Furthermore, oil companies have been exploiting us to sustain their profitability by using disinformation and lies to sabotage attempts to resolve this, even when they knew that it was causing problems. They were aware of the science since the sixties and seventies. And from the eighties onwards, they've uh, had a, they've adopted campaigns to deter action- and from the eighties onwards, they've adopted campaigns to deter action toward a solution. We are building toward a climate crisis, and action sooner than later will help avoid the most severe consequences. There's an overwhelming scientific consensus, you see the IPCC reports, that we need to reduce greenhouse gases, and then we want to leave a livable world for coming generations. Well, something didn't make it. Well. Yeah. The slide got corrupted something. Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay, the basic idea is still coming through. The basic idea is that you apply a carbon tax at the source, and that could be the mine, the wellhead, port. It's in terms of tons CO2 equivalent. Now, you could apply those fees to, you could use them for general purposes to the upper right, and that would be things like you could have offsetting tax cuts, you could separately fund climate mitigation measures, or you could use it for general, you know, government purposes. What CCL is proposing is to the lower right, in which all fees would be returned to citizens in equal share, and such will be revenue neutral. You wouldn't be taking anything out of the economy. And the key point is it sends a price signal to the economy. And this would spur energy efficiency, conservation, research, and innovation. It would promote non-fossil fuel energy sources such as renewables and nuclear, and supporting infrastructure investments. And it would influence decision-making at all levels, business, government, and individual. Think I missed something here? Yes. Yeah. Let's see, back up. But by itself, this wouldn't be a complete solution, but it might be the single most important thing we could do in terms of contributing toward an overall solution. Plus, it would be complementary to existing actions or programs or in effect at the national level, for instance, the Inflation Reduction Act that was just passed. And then Washington, at the state level, Washington State has a number of programs which you're probably aware of that work toward this goal. So how would it work? Again, you apply the fee at the source of the fossil fuel. It would start at $15 per ton and increase with time. The proceeds would be returned in equal share to all citizens. It'd be revenue neutral. You'd use a border adjustment fee, a tariff, if you will, to protect U.S. businesses and manufacturers from foreign competitors that didn't have a comparable tax. So you level the playing field. It emphasizes the role of the market, not regulation and bureaucracy. And assuming you're trying to deal with the issue at all, it's highly favored by economists for efficiency, minimal distortion, and equity. The benefits, most households would actually realize a net gain, a net benefit from this. There'd be economic stimulus from the cash back, there'd be job creation, spur innovation, energy efficiency, renewable and nuclear energy, save lives through reduced air pollution, and furthermore, limit the spread of pathogens. It'd be 50% greenhouse gas emission reductions by 2030, net zero by 2050, which is sort of the gold standard of what they're trying to reach. And furthermore, kind of the tragedy of the common is it corrects a failure of the market to account for climate and health impacts. This summarizes the impact on household budgets. The leftmost bar is all households. And you can see that 61% of all households would actually gain in this situation. 24%, there'd be a minor loss, and 15% would basically break even. And then the next three to the right are income quintiles one through three. You can see the great majority of households would actually receive a net benefit from this. That's where the equity comes into this. So I tell you, come to income quintile four, the last one next in from the right, that it's sort of a break even. In income quintile five, it's weighted toward a minor loss. This would be good for the economy. There'd be a lot of new jobs created in manufacturing, installation, and construction. Of course, there'd be some jobs lost in old industries, fossil fuel, but then there'd be a large net gain for the economy. Furthermore, there's green jobs, which you would call green, quote-unquote, jobs, are among the fastest-growing occupations in the U.S. at present. And there'd be savings from the mitigation from environmental and health harms caused by the current use of fossil fuels. Tens of thousands of lives would be saved annually in the U.S. just from air pollution alone, millions around the world. And in conclusion, we're seeking an endorsement by the council of the CCL's plan. And I have two ways, options to consider. One is sort of a general endorsement of the CCL plan via an online form. And I won't go into the details of why there's a separate thing, but, you know, hang with me here. Number two is just an endorsement of the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. And this was almost included in the recent omnibus that passed in the last Congress, late last year. Many cities and agencies have already endorsed this, among them are in Washington State or Yakima and Olympia. If you prefer to vote on something that has very specific language, this might be your preferred option. One potential problem with that is that with the change, with the current, your new Congress, it is presently not active in the current Congress, although it will likely be introduced. It was active in both of the previous two congressional sessions. So I'm asking for a dual endorsement. In fact, if you endorse option two, it's an easy step to just to do one as well. But either one would be dependent on considerations of C and D there. I don't know what your thinking is on wanting to have specific language or whether to be voting on something that isn't even active in the current Congress. So with that, I'll conclude, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions now or at a future time to address, in a mutually convenient place and time, to address concerns or answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Finn. Do we have any questions of Mr. Finn or Dr. Finn? Seeing none, thank you again for your presentation. We'll direct staff on an endorsement or we'll figure out the best route.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Director Buckley, you have a report for us, correct?
Good evening, mayor and council members. In your packet tonight was the January 2023 monthly general fund report. And one thing that I want to point out first is you have not seen the year-end report for 2022 yet, and that's partially because we continue to make the necessary entries to close year-end. It's a multi-step process, and so we are to the point. Two of those things that delayed the year-end report and also this January report are by state law, we keep our records open for a 13th period to make payments that meet 2022 services. So we did that for 20 days. And then there's about 60 days that we look at entries and make sure that we have all the revenues and expenditures in the right year tied to when they were earned or services or goods provided. So we're continuing, we've just gotten to that point, and continue to make entries for material or significant events. But we are able to provide January 2023 as all those 60-day entries are moved around, and you can see some of the activity that has happened for this first month of the biennium. The emphasis of the report is both revenues and expenses in the general fund. And as you all know, the general fund supports most things and services that the public thinks of as governmental services. They aren't fee-based. They are things like police services and fire department services, parks and recreation, administration of the city. And in the first page, oh, well, the first page, it's page two because it doesn't cover, there's an overview of permitting activity for the city. And in January, permitting activity was strong, as it had been last year. There were a total of 161 permits, and in 2022, January 2022, there's 158. So very, almost equal. The difference is in the value of the permits. It was almost two times as high as in 2022, and that was all in area permit types. It was in all permit types except for residential. Residential was slightly lower. But otherwise, permits, values, and issues are comparable to the prior year's timeframe. And we'll continue to monitor that. One reason that is significant is that it often equates to property tax, assessed value, that in turn impacts general fund revenue. So that's one reason we highlighted in the report. The second thing highlighted in the report is sales tax. Sales tax is a little tricky because it's a two-month time lag, and I think everybody knows, on the council knows that. But just for everybody in the audience, as you make purchases during the month, you pay sales tax on your purchases, and then the business has until the end of the month to report that sales tax the prior, or the following month. And then that gets remitted to the state, and then finally to the city. So there's a two-month lag before we see the sales tax revenue. So January's sales tax revenue is really November's sales. And so in the third page of your report is included January activity. And I'll just hit the highlight that looking at all general fund revenue sources in January of 2023, we're just a tiny bit below what it was in 2022. So $20,000 difference. It's all kind of interesting that it is so close. But right along, you know, the mix between the types of revenues is different, but very close, so that's good. And then there's two pages that represent just total revenues for the general fund and then another page of total expenses compared to the budget. And as of the end of January, that's 4% of the biennial budget, so we haven't gotten very far yet. And as we move through the months, you'll, of course, be provided more information. But revenue, partially because that time lag of recognition of when revenue is earned, is a little behind from what we'd expect. And a lot of our revenues, especially property tax, are not linear throughout the year, so that's not unusual. And then general fund expenses are just slightly under 4% for the year there, or so far in the year, 3.6%, so slightly lower. But that is also representative of some one-time expenses that we pay at the beginning of the year, like property insurance and dues and subscriptions, and some one-time purchases that benefit the city throughout the year. And so I don't want to spend too much time. I know you have a busy night, but we'll continue to report on a monthly basis now that we've gotten over that hump of mostly closing out year-end and can represent what's happening in 2023. And so I'll be back to report more to you at a later date. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you again for that report. We do have a comment from Councilman Compost.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Buckley, it's a very quick one. Looking at page five, 2021, 8,705. 2022, 7,915. 2023, 99,414 for miscellaneous. Big jump. What does miscellaneous account for, like?
It's a lot of things. One of the things that was a big jump there is we had a refund that was $80,000. So it's one time, we won't get another one, and it just is a one-time.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that delta. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Director Buckley? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We do have a public hearing. So eight A, public hearing and resolution number 4317, single-room occupancy housing moratorium. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This has been before council several times now, but almost exactly a year ago in 2022, March of 2022, council adopted a moratorium on the conversion of mainly commercial motel units to single-room occupancy housing units. That initial moratorium was in effect for six months, and in September of 2022, it was extended for another six months. In the meantime, the city is undertaking a housing capacity plan that will provide a very detailed analysis of housing opportunities and affordability. The moratorium will expire again tomorrow, actually. But due to its analysis in the housing capacity plan, staff would recommend that the moratorium be continued for another six months, and the proposed resolution attached to the agenda report provides the appropriate findings for that to occur.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on Director White before I open this to the public? Seeing no question or comment from council, I now ask anyone in the public if you have any comment regarding this topic. If you could go ahead and step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Second call for comment on this matter. Third and final call. Hearing no comment. This hearing is now closed. And can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to approve resolution number 4317, continuing the moratorium established through resolution number 4158, prohibiting the permitting of single-room occupancy housing and conversion thereto in the city of Pasto, pending study of impacts and best development practices and policy.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milne. All those in favor say aye.
Before we vote, can we just have a brief discussion?
There's a motion and a second, and I'll open now for further discussion.
Thank you. Just looking from council, how long we want to continue to just push this out and push this out? Do we have an expectation of when to have a completion of the housing capacity plan?
It will be about that same time, roughly in September of this year.
So this is the last that you're anticipating recommending for council?
Well, that is a council decision, but we'll have a better sense of the data probably in line with the expiration of the moratorium.
I understand it's a council decision. I think we've had it now twice before us in kicking it down the road, six months and then another six months. And so I just am wanting to know if that September is a hard and final date.
No, I wouldn't say that. I would say it's approximately the same time as the expiration.
Okay, well, I'll just register that I'd like to get, I'd like to see that housing capacity plan sooner rather than later, and September is another six months out. So I will, I plan on supporting this, but I don't want to continue to keep pushing this out now.
Thank you. Mayor Pritchard Miloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Councilmember Roach, obviously, I was one of the ones who tried to, who brought this forward as a moratorium to kind of take a pause. We had three different units that are currently still converting, none of which have opened their doors, I don't think, yet. their doors, I don't think, yet. And I agree with you. I expected to have data by now, so I'm eager to see the data and stop having to revisit this moratorium and make a decision one way or the other. So if we can get, so I'm hoping that the preliminary data we may have for this will be sufficient for us to not continue to discuss a further moratorium, that we can make a decision either to let it expire, end it prematurely, or change your code in whatever way if necessary at all. So that's my hope and expectation, so I agree with your timing frustration on this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? All right. Well, we have a motion. It's been seconded. At this point, seeing no further discussion on this item. All those in favor of a premium resolution forty-three seventeen, continuing the moratorium. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
There are six yes, one no. Thank you for that. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, item nine, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, none listed. Item ten on the agenda, unfinished business, retail sales of cannabis discussion after rescission, rescission of resolution number forty-three point, forty-three zero-three, and again, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Probably not a lot of introduction needed on this topic. As council obviously knows, resolution forty-three oh-three was adopted, which provided staff direction to prepare ordinances that are appropriate for use of the I zones as location for retail cannabis activity, retail cannabis sales through a conditional use permit process, which is subject to the Pasco hearing examiner decision. That, of course, was rescinded in February, and upon concurrence of council tonight, staff will return with the appropriate material, depending on what that consensus or concurrence is.
Thank you for that. Do we have any further questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tembloni.
Thanks, Mayor Barajas. I'll kick it off. I guess someone's got to, right? So first off, I'm going to defend my fellow council members and my council up here. These attacks on our mayor and our council are ridiculous. I mean this sincerely. All that was done was we went from a resolution directing staff to perform work to discuss it further, which is exactly what everyone seems to be saying that we need to do, is have more discussion. They want to be heard more. So this idea that somehow there's a backroom deal was being done. No ordinance was going to be passed that evening. All we did was we took back our direction to staff to prepare an ordinance. The main reason why I supported that is because the last thing in the world they wanted to do was get to a spot where we spent time, drafted an ordinance, and brought it in front of us, and then what? We amended, we rejected. If there's questions and comments before we got to that point, it was better to do it early than late. So I really reject these attacks than this idea of some sort of backroom deal being done, or some sort of cloak and dagger sort of thing that this council is pulling. Everything is done in the public eye. That's what we do, and we have a good reputation for that. And I'm offended by the attacks of my fellow council members. So I'll say some things about where I see things going and what my thoughts are. I've had a lot of conversation. We've had a lot of, we've taken up a lot of air in this room, more than I wanted to spend on this, for darn sure. I'll say that those that are opposed to legal retail cannabis have a commonality, and that's primarily that they don't want cannabis to be in our community. The examples they use are about, are often what's going on in our community today, in our high schools today, in our streets today. Retail cannabis sales are illegal in Pasco, and we are having these problems today. This city council does not get to control whether people consume cannabis in the city of Pasco. It is being consumed. When I was in high, when I was a high schooler in the tri-cities, it was being consumed then. This hasn't changed. So this idea that somehow retail sales are going to dramatically change the landscape and, you know, be really hurting kids, they're already being hurt today. That's a different issue. There's an illegal, they're taking illegal action, and that needs to be addressed separately. That is not about retail cannabis. The studies, including those provided by Chief Roski, show that student access and use are declining, and declined precipitously after legalization of retail cannabis in the state of Washington. In twenty twelve, you can see there's a cliff about access that kids had to cannabis. It's been dropping ever since, by the way. I support legal retail cannabis in Pasco, not as a driver for taxes, not as a driver for, necessarily for economic development in any particular part of town. Those remain to be seen, and those can be had, those can all be questioned. The data is clear that retail, legal retail's cannabis sales keep children safe. And my issue and my focus is on the safety of our kids. That's where I've come to my conclusion. I keep on being told that somehow I'm using that, you know, it's follow the money, right? I don't, that's not my point. That's not where I'm at. Repeated studies have shown that legal cannabis sales decrease illegal street sales of cannabis, which is where our kids are getting anyways. Their compliance is very high. The state compliance is far in excess of cigarettes, or any sort of tobacco products, and alcohol. The state reports on this are very clear. So again, the data is all supportive of the fact that what this does is this limits children's access to cannabis. I understand that you may not think that that makes any sense. The data is clear. And I've read, I don't know, two dozen, two dozen reports at this point in time. So when we come down to this and this discussion repeatedly, that's where my mindset is, and that's why I'm in favor of retail cannabis sales. I can't and don't consume. I don't intend to consume in the future. This is not, I'm not, I'm not the market here. I have no business in this. There's no money in it for me, and I don't expect there to ever be any money in it for me. That's not the point. And those that are trying to use that as their issue and focus on that, on that, are mischaracterizing me and misunderstanding me as a human of what my cares are and what I do to secure this community. When I talk about where to put this, I think Mr. Barnes's editorial that he provided a couple weeks ago, that I cited in this council chambers, it is racist ordinance to put it in East Pasco, and only East Pasco. If you look where our people of color are, our historical minority population is, and the stigma that we have in Pasco of what East Pasco is, and we're talking about taking something that we don't trust the rest of the city to have, we only want to put it in East Pasco, yet again, is an area where we as a city need to think about where our values are and who, and who we need to support, and how we want to support them. And so I will, I maintain my statement of, I believe that cannabis retail sales should be allowed in the entire city, as they are in Spokane, and which, by the way, talked to one of the police captains there, as well as council members there, there is no additional crimes associated with these. They're not having the issues. You talk to West Richland, they have this little donut hole, this cannabis shop that that council opposed strongly, and that community opposed strongly. They are not having, there's no violent crime around it. There's no more crime than you see around, I don't know, a corner store, a gas station. They're seeing as much or less crime than they see in basic retail and other ways. So I hear a lot of things, and I've read, believe me, I've read your emails, I've listened to now, gosh, dozens of hours of testimony. I'm paying attention. I did my homework. I've done so much research on this for something that I'm not going to use. It's not a priority for me to even, to even talk about this, but it's a rights issue. It's an issue that one of our community members brought in front of us and said, please think about this. I did my research. My conclusion is, we should be legalizing retail cannabis. And Mr. Dallas Barnes was very eloquent in his statement of, if you put it only in Pasco, you're creating another racist ordinance that continues the stigma of what East Pasco is. So I'll continue to support retail cannabis in all commercial districts in the city of Pasco. Thank you.
Councilman Serrano?
So I'll offer my thoughts here, and I think one of the things that you said, Mr. Maloney, is that the people want to be heard. They're being heard. They continue to make their voices heard. And I think we start and stop there. My position has long been, this needs to go to an advisory vote of the people. I think the people have the ability to share, you know, ten thousand voices, fifteen thousand voices. If we hit it in August, it'll probably be that ten to twelve thousand range. If we push to November, which, I mean, I really don't have any interest in delaying it. If we push to November, you'll probably see thirty or forty thousand votes from the city of Pasco to give us their voices. And that's an overwhelming majority of the adult population of the city. So my position is, we should have conducted an advisory vote long ago. We missed it in November by literally a day. Please take note, council, C-O-U-N-S-C-L, if we do move forward with this, let's figure out what our timelines are, so we can make sure that if we do have an advisory vote, we don't miss it by a day. So let's just make sure that we're there. In my opinion is, we have the advisory vote, we look at it, we cull the data, and we make the decision from there. But until then, we don't need to continually have some type of hashed-out iteration of what it could or should look like. If we want to make the advisory vote so specific as to have a flowdown of, and I think this gets confusing. I think it should be a simple yea or nay. But if we want to see that, we could say yea or nay, and maybe have a separate element for location, but I think that, quite frankly, flows down well too much. So I think an advisory vote is where we need to go.
Councilman Brum?
Just real quick, on same topic, so I'm kind of in connection with Pete there. I would like to see this just go and hear from the people. So put it on the ballot. Let's see what Pasco has to say, and just be satisfied with that. Because the way it's looking, honestly, the phone calls, the direct threats, let's stop that. And let's just be an honest city. This is, this is not, this is not to be taken lightly. It's a very strong vote, and I understand what the community is saying on both sides. Mr. Brown is not in this. Mr. Brown is in it for the city. So let the city speak. Let's put it on the ballot, and it is what it is.
Thank you. Councilman Milne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would also like to echo Councilman Brown and Serrano's opinion. I mean, again, it's divided our council. It's been very divisive. It's hard. I don't want to do city business. I mean, it seems like this just never goes away. I thought we had an agreement, but it didn't fell through. So let's just bring it up to the people, let the people decide. I believe both sides will get out there and vote, and, you know, if it passes, then we support it. And if not, I mean, again, same with Aquatic Center. I was against it. I didn't want to see taxes raised, but voter spoke. I'm going to be supporting it. So I'm just saying, let's, people get their chance to vote. And again, we've gone on this long enough. Let's let the people vote and move on to city business is what we should be doing for the last couple months. So that's my two cents.
Any further questions or comments?
I'm going to go ahead and jump you on that, on that one. Councilmember Campos, I guess I'll echo some of the things that have already been said. I'm disappointed in those that have chosen to speak out and use their voice in a way that is more threatening, as Councilmember Brown was saying. It is disheartening because as somebody who comes from a family that has addiction as part of its, you know, genetic, hereditary pass down from both sides, it's something that we talk about frequently in our family. And I know for a fact, I have many family members who are sober, that you can hide a bottle from an alcoholic, and they're going to find another bottle. And so to me, this conversation of equating and muddying the waters with addiction and mental health, this was an issue that was brought to us by the downtown business owners. That's when it was considered by the council. It was not part of our retreat. It was not part of our agenda. It was not our personal policy that we were pursuing. But when the public speaks to us and says, we want you to consider something, then it's our duty to consider it, and that's what we did. And frankly, I'm also sick and tired of still talking about it because it doesn't personally affect me. And I would like to have come to a decision because I like to stick to my word. And we said we would come to a decision at the end of twenty twenty-two, and now we're in twenty twenty-three. So I'm also equally frustrated because I had hoped that we would have a resolution. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again, that it's our duty as council to be clear with the public and communicate clearly with them the decisions that we are making, and we have not done that as a collective group. So that's frustration I share with you all, peers and public. I think that even if we put it to an advisory vote and spend money doing that, and push it out to August, we delay, one, we pay a lot of money to do so, two, I do think it would be a fair representation of what Pasco wants. I don't disagree there. However, I think that it still comes back to this body, this body right here, to then decide the ordinance language. And so we are right back in the decision-making process of having this same conversation, and if our minds are not made up on the issue, and they're not made up on the issue. And so I am also frustrated, and I'd like to get to a decision-making place, and I don't know, you know, where everybody lies on it now that things have been, that previous vote had been rescinded. And I will say that I am not in favor, and for me, this is the lens through which I see this. This is a legalized business in the state of Washington, and I do not want to be discriminatory to a business owner to say you are allowed to do it here and not here, or you are allowed to have it here, but you can't have it there. That, to me, feels unequal and not right. And so that's my denominator of where I am looking at this issue right now. And I guess that's what, where I'll leave it. So I'm happy to advisory vote, or vote tonight. I would just like to be done with this issue, but advisory vote, it comes right back around to us in August to then make a decision. And if that's going to be the thing, then, then make up your minds on what you want to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone to please reserve your comments until everyone in the council has made their comment. Thank you. Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Want to thank the rest of council again. As I've said before, I'm really proud to work with every single one of you up here. While we may not agree on fundamentals, we treat each other with respect. We listen to everybody's point of view, and we're willing to learn from one another. And I feel that shows maturity up here on the dais. I would like to say that our constituents show the same level of maturity. I want to thank, Lawanda Hatch is the only person that reached out to me and wanted to talk to me about how I felt. Nobody else. There's been some assumptions about where I'm at. There's been some conversations in the background. I'm sure reporters have made assumptions about what my agenda is. I've been called progressive left and right. I spend my weekend shooting guns and doing hunting stuff. Like, you can call me whatever you want. I've got long hair and a beard. But it comes down to the fact that the last two and a half, three years, we spent a lot of time having a conversation about the level of involvement the government should have in our day-to-day lives. You don't want to tell you that you wear a piece of fabric over your face. As Councilman Roach eloquently put, I shouldn't be able to tell a business that's legally allowed to participate in the state of Washington that they can or can't do something. That seems very conservative. Small government, I'm for business. Councilman Serrano hit the nail on the head. You know, I definitely think that an advisory vote, what's clear is the people do not want us to make a decision for them. But as Councilwoman Roach pointed out, if we tune advisory vote, it comes right back to us. This is an opportunity, if we send it to an advisory vote, to craft the advisory vote that opens Pandora's box. I say, as Councilman Mayor Pro Tembloni says, this is going to go citywide. We let the market determine, the people determine what business goes in their neighborhood, not us. If nobody wants to patronize a particular business that opens up on sixty-eight burden, that's on them. That's not our decision. That's up to them. I appreciate, and I think tonight, again, as Mr. Grimm pointed out, I did feel a little slighted. I was kind of taken aback. I was open to the less restrictive I did feel a little slighted, I was kind of taken aback, I was open to the less restrictive amen- or movement. Um, when we amended that, I was a little blindsided, but after further clarification, after the fact, realizing as Mayor Pro Tembloni pointed out, that the likelihood of this going to a resolution and failing is not an effective use of our time. And in rescinding that vote, again, it's allowed everybody in this room to have their voice heard, right, wrong, or di- different. Everyone's voice matters. We took an oath up here to listen to every single one of you and to take everything you say into consideration, whether I agree with you or not. I I think from the conversation that's up here tonight, this likely gonna go to an advisory vote, and I would like to see that advisory vote open it up in the entire city, then it comes back to us, we can't dispute what happens there. If it's a yes vote, the ordinance we're drafting is citywide. People don't want it, we don't have to ever see it again. That's my say.
Thank you for your comments and I'd just like to thank everyone, um, for your comments, including the public. Whether they were ill-intended or not, thank you again for all your comments. Um, having, taking everything into consideration, uh, I do want to appreciate, um, council's, um, feedback. Yes, um, the intention was to open it up for further discussion, just to get clarification again, on the route that we were taking this into. Uh, Mayor Pro Tembloni, you're right. We can't be discriminatory. It needs to be open to, uh, citywide, really. We cannot focus or make it seem like we're targeting one neighborhood versus another. Um, you're right. Opening, opening it to citywide would eliminate that um, perspective, um, I guess. Staff, again, thank you again for allowing us the further discussion on this issue. Um, but I do want to also acknowledge Councilman Serrano's, uh, Devon, uh, Milne's and Mister Brown's, Councilman Brown's, um, feedback on this. Um, regarding an advisory vote or vote or taking it out to, um, allowing the people to speak. You've all spoken. Um, and this is the reason why we're here again, to, again, take all your comments into consideration. We're here to now guide our staff on the next step. And again, hearing all your comments. And listening to further discussion, I think, um, I agree with, uh, Mayor Pro Tembloni's. We need to move forward and open it to, to citywide in all commercial and industrial areas. Um, so with that, how do we envision a motion, solution, resolution? Comment from Councilman Campos.
Yeah, just, just for point of clarity for those who are listening, who may be joining us for the first time or maybe missed this portion of. But there's a finite number of business applications that can be had in Pasco. So when we discuss about opening this up, we're not gonna have one on every corner, you're not gonna have it look like Starbucks. There's a finite number and that that number, if I remember on our, uh, resolution that we passed, we limited to three. It could be less, I've I've slept since then and and I apologize, my days are long. Um, I think it might be three, and again, if I stand corrected, if that's something that we can continue to, uh, hold the city to, um, I would be amendable to that, I would also welcome any other discussion on seeing what that looks like. Again, I I can't thank the rest of you on council enough. Um, I think that some people will point our relationship as adversarial and it's anything but. So thank you again, guys.
Thanks again for your comments, um, and Mayor Pro Tembloni.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. So I I think, so we need to, we need to move forward and I think that we need, and I think each of our council members up here deserves a right to ma- to be able to vote up or down on two matters. One is an advisory vote and one is the authorization of retail cannabis um, across the city and sea and and, uh, commercial and industrial areas. I would recommend that we bring these two resolutions in that order in front of, in front of, uh, council, um, at our next business meeting to or to first vote on whether or not we do an advisory vote. If that vote passes, no need to do anything further, everything else remains until that advisory vote is done. And then after that would be, if that vote fails, then a vote, an up or down vote to authorize it in all commercial and industrial zones. This is a clear communication to both the community and each other as to what, what decisions we need to make. Obviously, I don't, we're not prepared to make those decisions and votes tonight, I'm not gonna put, uh, Mister Ferguson on, on, uh, that stand tonight to make, to be able to draft something up. Um, that'll be my recommendation on how we can have clarity with what I think I heard, the two things that were the primary elements here. That's my recommendation to my fellow council members as a direction for staff.
Yeah, I'll support that.
I will as well.
So just, so I'm absolutely clear, we're coming back with a resolution for a potential advisory vote, which there may be some nuance to that. There's a bill in the legislature right now that we'll know more about on Wednesday of whether we, it would have to wait until the general election in November for an advisory vote. So, but we'll know more, uh, after Wednesday about that. Uh, and then the second thing is to come back with a resolution allowing, uh, a marijuana and or a cannabis store and or retail outlet in both C zones and I zones with the conditional use permit process or not. Or do we not even want to mess with that and we'll mess with that when we get to the, the ordinance?
I I'm opposed to, um, a conditional use permit, the state already takes care of all the things that we need in place, but, um, from my co- fellow council member's side otherwise, so I'm, I'm not strongly opinionated on this, um, on this one.
Councilman Campos?
I just wanted to, is that state SB fifty-sixty-nine, Mister Ferguson?
Uh, no, it's, uh, sixteen HB sixteen-fifty, uh, the, the one you're talking about is, uh, related to social equity licenses.
Uh, yes, well, SB, SB fifty-nine sixty, or fifty-sixty-nine is allowing interstate cannabis agreements that put forward by bipartisan committee to try to get ahead of, uh, presumption of the federal government rescinding the ban on marijuana, if as far as I understand it, so.
We can take a look at it, but that's not, that wasn't the one I was referring to, yeah?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Roach?
My opinion has been the same on the conditional use permit. I do not want to relitigate this for a business owner over and over again and put barriers in front of them to start their business. So I'm not in favor of a conditional use permit and I'm not in favor of it if it goes on an advisory ballot vote. Um, but you're asking about if it's a resolution come next business meeting and I would say I'm not in favor of it there as well.
Councilman Campos?
Yeah, I'll just, sorry, just focused on that. Um, I, I think I'm gonna agree with Councilman Maloney, I think that we just look at drafting advisory vote first and then we craft, um, whatever the resolution ordinance is supposed to look like, whether that stipulations otherwise.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Pro Tembloni, but your request was for an advisory vote resolution as well as a secondary resolution to draft a particular ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
And what was that?
My recommendation was, um, um, was without a, without a hearing examiner, um, review.
C zones, I zones and no conditional use permit process?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we're all clear.
Correct. No comment. Any further comment, discussion?
If I may make one more comment, I think this sounds like a good compromise because I think everyone's gonna leave here unhappy.
Yeah, I, I'll state that I, I still remain pro conditional use permit, but I suspect that I'm in the minority on that. Uh, just from what I've heard and the kind of head nods that I've seen. I'll throw that out there, but again, I, I don't think we have to take this one in the mat because I, I at least want to voice it.
Any further recommendation?
Oh, man.
Okay. Thank you again, uh, everyone, thank you again to the community for, uh, your input. And with that, we'll move on with, um, new business, there's none listed. Uh, miscellaneous discussion, actually, I do have a comment before our interim city manager says any miscellaneous comments before anyone else leaves. I'd like to invite you all to a meet and greet for our in it interim city manager, uh, being held this Wednesday at six P M. at the Holiday Inn Express. Again, a meet and greet for, uh, Mister Adam Lincoln. You're all invited to come and meet him, ask him questions, uh, yeah, just have at him. All right, with that, with that, um, do you have any?
Uh, one quick one and thank, thank you for mentioning that, Mayor. Also wanted to mention that we're going to be doing the Broadmoor groundbreaking on Thursday the ninth at three P M. Uh, and if you could make it to Broadmoor and Harris, that'll be the, the area where we'll have, uh, parking available so you can kind of get into the, the field a little bit and, uh, we'll have, uh, quite a few folks there hopefully and and some representatives from the uh, real estate side that's been working on marketing the, the, the properties as well, so it should be a pretty good, uh, event and hoping, hoping for good turnout. Thank you.
Thank you for that, so any further comment?
Oh, no, sorry, I forgot to turn that off.
Anyone else, any further, uh, comments under miscellaneous? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, item thirteen. I will have, I will say, and I will mention that this is Chief Rosky's favorite item. Uh, there is a need for executive session for fifteen minutes, it's eight forty-three and we'll be in executive session for fifteen minutes. Uh, discussion with legal counsel about legal risk of current or proposed, uh, action per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one I and consideration of the min- minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate, if there's a likelihood, that disclosure would decrease the price per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one C. The factors influencing the price include sale price and land use considerations. And it is eight forty-four now, we will return at, um, nine o'clock? All at a minute.
Thank you everyone that is still in the council chambers and everyone that is still watching us. We have returned from our executive session and there being no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned. Have a good night everyone.